All right, hey, everybody. Welcome to the April 29th meeting of the Dover School Committee, Sherburne School Committee, and Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. I'm Jeff Cassidy, and I call this meeting to order at 5:32. We are live streaming on DSC TV, and we are recording this meeting as well. So first on our agenda, we have community comments. We have provided a, is it Google Meet link at this point? So there's a Google link for any participants that community would like to make a comment. Do we have any community comments? No. Okay. Seeing none, we can move along to our superintendent comments.
Hi. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief because we just met a few weeks ago, and then we had an April vacation in the middle, so not too many updates. As you know, we are in the final stages of budget season. We can see the finish line. Tonight, as you know, is the Sherburne Town Meeting, so hopefully many of you will be joining us to support the operating budgets for both Pine Hill and their portion of the region, as well as the TARP project. Dovertown Meeting is next Monday. Sherburne will vote on Tuesday, May 13th, and Dover on Monday, May 19th. So please make sure that your neighbors and family are out to vote at all of those occasions. Hiring process is also underway, and it's very exciting to see teams of teachers and parents and administrators and students coming together to meet candidates for all of our schools. And we have great teacher candidates, lots of qualified people submitting their information. I know our principals are very excited about that. And in terms of the administrative level, for those of you who aren't currently parents of grades five or eight students, you may or may not know that we have found an excellent candidate for our middle school assistant principal position moving forward. So Jennifer Santo-Suoso will be joining us. She has 18 years of experience as an English teacher at both the middle and high school level, Hopkinton and Hope Dale, and six years of experience as both the middle school and high school assistant principal in Franklin Public Schools. So for our benefit, Franklin is downsizing from three middle schools to one, so we win Jennifer in the process, so she's coming with experience. Denny and Ann Deverkegan did a great job organizing a multi-step process that included lots of stakeholders. The time that I got to spend with Jennifer, I really appreciated. You know, we always like the idea of bringing in outside voices to bring perspective and new experiences to the table, but the fact that we all connected right away in terms of our vision and our values, I think, was super important. So if you haven't met her yet, I'm excited for you to meet her moving forward, and she already is going to be spending some days in the district transitioning between now and July 1st. So if you see her, please welcome her. Tell a little bit about your experience at the middle school in DS, and we'll be off and running come July 1st. Social media, we continue to work both as a school community and as a parent and school partnership in terms of supporting students with their social media usage. As you know, we're continuing to use the yonder pouches at the middle school. We're waiting to see how we want to move forward at the high school, especially with pending legislation and what we know about the science of social media. And tomorrow night, as a reminder, we have our third event in a series, and it's really an opportunity for our health teachers to talk about the curriculum that we have around social media usage, so you can hear the language and the information our students here in school and replicate it at home. Our school resource officers will be there to talk about their experiences and how they're both part of the education in school, but also their experiences outside of school and what they see in real life. We'll have strategies and tools for parents to use to monitor and support and help their kids navigate. And I think that's it. So tomorrow, 6:30 at the high school library. So that'll be a nice little break from this room. I know you love this room.
Beth, can I ask if it's just for parents?
Anybody, really.
Kids can come, too.
Sure. Yep. We don't know if we'll have official professional recording. Yes. So we'll share it out afterwards. If we're not able to make it, of course, we'd love company, but we will share it out. Dr. Walsh's presentation from earlier this spring, we do have a video link for, I believe it's gone out in the newsletters. And so if you want that link, we'll make sure you have it. If you don't already, she did ask for some protection that it's not just floating out there for public viewers on YouTube, so we'll send you the link again that you could request the access, just to give that extra layer of protection for her request. And lastly, we will be having professional development for all of you tomorrow afternoon at 5 o'clock. For those of you who are able to join us, we'll be over in the conference room in the main office, having an opportunity for you all to talk with one of our attorneys, Justin Gomes, about kind of the changing times that we as educators and parents and students are facing with law and with technology. I know that we are very interested in making sure that our policies and protocols are up to snuff based on the work that the policy subcommittee is doing. So tomorrow is an opportunity to hear from Justin, kind of what's current in expectations and policies, and for you to ask questions to make sure that what we have in place, you know, meets the standards. So that's at 5 o'clock tomorrow. We'll be done 6-ish, no later than 6:15, so those of you who want to stay and walk over to the social media presentation at 6:30 can do so. And we will offer a Zoom link for those of you who perhaps are at home with little ones and can't make it. I can't, I don't know why we couldn't probably record it as well, so we'll work on it. And that's it for updates. Happy to take feedback and questions.
Any questions?
I just want to say thank you for offering community nights like this. I think it's always timely. I feel like you've made a point to have the anxious generation book group and this community night and kind of events to help inform people because it is challenging times that we live in, and just allowing people the opportunity to think and reflect and have conversation around how can we ensure that any technology we use is done so thoughtfully and responsibly.
Thank you.
Is there a way we can make this a resource for parents to go back and look at these recordings because so many people can't come in person?
Yeah.
But it's such valuable information. So, and I know there's, you know, different layers of security we would need to have, you know, to make sure for, you know, privacy reasons, but it seems like something I think that the whole school should have access to.
Yeah.
The district.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. All right. No other comments or questions there, then we can move to the next topic, which is the superintendent's evaluation.
Aw, yay. All righty. Perfect. Thanks so much. So I'd like to first thank Christine, Angie, Goli, and hey, I don't thank myself. The four of us. We took, like, we took all of the input from essentially, unless I've run at this table, I've run on the school board, and really thank every respondent as well because there were some really thoughtful and helpful remarks made in each of the evaluation forms. The four of us, as the subcommittee chosen, took all that information in and figured, how can we tell the story that reflects this year's past work in the district of Superintendent McCoy? And I think basically they made it fun and really also thoughtful and just kind of, I feel like there's many moments where we were kind of sunboarding and thinking through, how can we ensure that this is helpful, not just fluffy or anything? And so we have this report that has a lot of the detail, and we'll provide an overview tonight, but I think that really they, we collectively managed to make this kind of a, what could be a challenging process, quite doable and hopefully very helpful.
Oops.
Benny?
That's not working.
I'm pointing to you now. Benny. Sorry. Okay. All righty. So this first page just basically talks about the state of Massachusetts evaluation process, and I'm quite familiar with it. As I mentioned before, I work in the public schools in a different district, but this kind of process in one sense is quite similar, whether a classroom teacher, a principal for the building, or a superintendent. But there are a few little differences, and we'll point out how that is here. Whereas in the other positions, you may have different bosses and so on. For a superintendency, it's the school committee who evaluates, and we do so with the same general template and format. It involves setting a student learning goal, that's one that directly impacts students, a professional practice goal, thinking, how can we manage our team of educators?
Jesus.
And also district goals and priorities, and that would depend, you know, very much so on the district needs, and a regional district has unique needs and resources available. The second part of that system is standards and competencies. These are based on a rubric linked here, but anyone can find those rubrics online. For the state of Massachusetts, they have a pretty helpful template. There's basically four indicators or four standards, and then several indicators, and each of those indicators is then broken down into more elements. So the structure of it can get quite granular in terms of the day-to-day of one's, any person's job. Such a job is easier to understand if you're in the building all the time with that person, but we are looking sometimes from the outside and trying to figure out what evidence did we have during this year of meetings and questions to speak to those standards, indicators, and elements. Sometimes we have sufficient evidence, it's very clear, and I know Superintendent McCoy has prepared quite well in terms of organizing her thinking. We had some check-ins along the way. Other times, there simply isn't strong opportunity, and our, you know, general guidance is we're not going to pretend and comment on things that we don't have strong connection to on the day-to-day. So you'll find in this report that we basically referenced many of the indicators and elements that we feel connected to, and that was, I say "we" because it truly was, an individual endeavor in the reports that each of you filled out, and then as the subgroup, we kind of compiled that to try to create an overall assessment understanding within those categories. The wheel underneath starts with red, it's just basically a reflective cycle, and it's important to also think about this, this cycle is typically annual in the first couple of years of someone's new job. After that, particularly for a superintendent, busy with many things, and sometimes goals span more than one year, we have the option to think of it as a two-year thing. It's still the same cycle of steps, it could just be drawn out, and that is not for us to decide tonight, but something to think about. And the, you know, pros and cons. The pros of drawing out a little more is you have time to really see how's that actually moving forward. I think there can be more of a solid check-in point at the midpoint. Cons, maybe, you know, it's tough to sometimes wait two years for a goal and set a new one. So we can, you know, I'm happy to be a sounding board and conversation partner down the road, but that's just an opportunity now that Beth has finished her third year that we could consider done in the future, spanning out to a two-year process wheel. It still involves a goal-setting, it still involves a lot of reflection and checking, still involves a lot of evidence, and so on.
Oops. Damn.
Wait, did that work? Wait, did it work? Hey, Beth, it's working. This is me now. All right. All right. One thing that's tricky, the goals are rated on a scale, the standards are also rated on the scale. So remember, the goals are set, kind of student learning, professional practice, and district goals, kind of Dover Sherburne specific, and the scale is right there. You either didn't meet the goal, you made some progress, made significant progress, you met the goal, or you exceeded the goal. Standards, on the other hand, those are based on the template that's the same across the state, but the ranking is also slightly different. It's either unsatisfactory, you need improvement, proficient, or exemplary. At this point, I just want to point out exemplary rankings for the state are exceedingly rare. The thought is, your only exemplary, it's like not criticize is praise enough, you know? Your exemplary, if you do something that other people, other districts are like, we need to do it, we need to take that, we need to adopt that process, that system. And I think there is some evidence of, and they presented at the Mass Conference, there's some evidence of spanning and sharing ideas beyond the district walls, but that exemplary ranking, just so we understand where our baseline is, is very rare. I don't know of many, as I said before, there's a tool and ranking used for teachers, principals, administrators. I've really not seen many exemplary ratings in my career, but just, just so you know, it can exist, but not a common thing. Oops. Hey. It was my fault initially. I think I was going back to slide zero, it didn't exist, so finally on board. All righty. So here's the process. I think I talked about this verbally early on, so to save time, I'll just give you a minute to read. Okay. Saying that we had to take basically over, you know, 15 entries and kind of think about how to tell that collective story as one entity. And, here, I gave the background, this is student learning, so Angie, you'll take it.
That's me.
Yes.
So then we had to deal with each of the goals. So if we looked at the student learning goal, we had to calibrate and refine the observations and make sure that it was focused, and we had that constructive feedback was given to the educators at school and the district goals, so that if you looked at it, that was a 1D. All the responses taken in, in together collectively, stated that it was largely met, and most everyone said that it was met or exceeded, although one respondent noted that it was significant progress. The only question was, it was unclear if there was an automatic follow-up from staff, if there was a question, how was it handled? And one future suggestion would be to consider implementing a clear process for educators to provide documented follow-up based on the feedback received from observations. So as we know, and as we've seen in all of our meetings, Denny and Beth both do a lot of in-person observations, they go to each building, there's a lot of input into how we structure our professional development and how we use that to then, you know, bridge to our student learning. And then the next one that I'm in charge of is the professional practice goal, and that as well was met, both of these were met. And this is for engaging with local, state, and national superintendents, which as we know, Beth has been on a path, this is the final year of that path where she's in the group with other superintendents as a mentor-mentee, but you gain additional strategies and communicate with the stakeholders and navigate challenges and maintain the momentum on our district goals and initiatives. And this year, we had a lot of district goals and initiatives that were met as well. This is all part of her professional networking. As I said, this was largely met or exceeded, and most people rated it as met or exceeded, and one evaluator evaluated it as a significant progress. There have been several instances of Superintendent McCoy sharing and learning with fellow administrators and district staff and aligning the new findings to district goals and the nine best practices. And as we know, that she and Denny too have presented to other districts about what we've done here.
Thank you.
So next up, pardon me, we have the district improvement goals, and that was met. So just to remind all of the further implementation, to further implement the district nine best practices to engage students as active learners in the development of skills depicted in the Dover Sherburne portrait of a graduate. And all of us cumulatively said that this goal was largely met or exceeded, evidence through the look-forers, the collaborative walkthroughs, the presentations to a statewide audience, and a clear awareness among staff of what everyone was working towards. One evaluator did note that the portrait of a graduate might be getting a little fuzzy with older students and would encourage, you know, Beth and Denny and others to consider how it can remain relevant and clear to all students on perhaps a day-to-day, week-to-week focus. The second one was to elevate student voice as a means to increase students' sense of belonging and inform classroom and district policy and practice. This goal was largely met or exceeded with efforts including student retreats, secondary advisory councils, shadowing opportunities, elementary school lunches, and student-friendly surveys. And finally, three, the goal to streamline tools and strategies to improve communication, increase collaboration, and strengthen engagement with families and the community. So this goal was largely met or exceeded. Key achievements noted, including a clear website and the successful rollout of Parent Square. One evaluator noted that despite the success of Parent Square, there is a lot of room for growth regarding message length and parents missing information. Another noted discrepancies between elementary and secondary Parent Square platforms, for example, permission slips being available on one and potentially not the other. Something to consider going forward is an opportunity to grow, or clear guidelines and potentially additional training or tools for staff to optimize the conciseness, clarity, and purposes of Parent Square messages.
Can I say something before we move on?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. On this note, you know, as we transition from the goals to the standards, two quick things. One, we definitely felt we dug hard to try to think about constructive feedback because we know that you're always open to it. So, you know, you have the slideset, you can see some of the little granular detail. The overwhelming success of Parent Square was articulated several times over, and at the same time, we're wondering if there's some way to take it further to even be more clear. So far, the black text was basically the goal framing from within the district, and this is how we set the verbiage on that. In the next few slides, the standards, the black text is from that rubric document. It's the same regardless of which district you work in, but it still is important guiding text to say, how have we done?
Thanks. Thank you. So now, moving forward with the second, second steps, which are standards. And as a reminder, this ranking scale, the rating scale is different from the goals. We have unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. And our first, the first standard, which is instructional leadership, the overall rating was proficient, and the definition for that was the education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all the staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. And under this standard, there were two focus indicators which were aligned by, aligned with Mrs. McCoy's goals, that for the most part, those were also ranked as proficient, too. And the blue text is one of the comments that we had, which said Superintendent McCoy has created a true culture of learning within our district, reaching just about every stakeholder in meaningful ways. Through an impressive range of continuing education options for teachers and administrative, Beth has built an environment where questions are welcome and diverse viewpoints are celebrated. She constantly looks to new horizons to identify emerging best practices in education. The second standard, which is management and operation, again, overall rank was proficient. This standard was the education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all the staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum staffing and scheduling. Under this standard, there was one focus indicator aligned with Mrs. McCoy's goals, which was also ranked proficient by all of you. And a comment that is under this standard, I would like to point out the excellent team in Dawn Fator and Superintendent McCoy. I'm consistently impressed with their attention to detail and forecasting as it relates to maintaining a healthy budget to meet the needs of educators and students.
The third standard is family and community engagement, and the group found Superintendent McCoy to be proficient. The education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the district and its schools. Some comments included Superintendent McCoy has brought families in for their feedback and opinions when it matters. And additionally, she has reached beyond the traditional school hours to engage families in the new areas of community concern. These would include the use of artificial intelligence in school, appropriate use of phones, and review of literature involving the epidemic of anxiety among school-aged children.
And the last standard is standard four, which is professional culture. In this standard, the education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by nurturing and sustaining a district-wide culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. The comments around this standard was, by creating a transparent way to measure the nine best practices, Superintendent McCoy has created a clear, comprehensible way for all educators to be able to assess their work and to better actualize these excellent teaching goals. And Superintendent McCoy and Mr. Conklin create a staff professional development opportunities with a shared vision for the district at the top of mind. The overall rating for this evaluation series is proficient. And before we leave, I want to thank Mark, because Mark's, he can't think himself, but he needs to because he carried the lion's share of this. So all of us, thank you, Mark.
Oh, thanks so much. Yeah. Thanks so much. It was a pleasure, actually, to think about all this thought that, you know, the collective minds had here. We know that the district leadership puts in a lot of planning and thought into their own work, and this is a way to honor that and to kind of consider where else, where's the opportunity? The writing in this document has a lot more detail, and, you know, we gave an overview, the proficient ranking, there is some little breakdown, if you wanted to see down to that individual element layer, you absolutely can dig down. And if you have any follow-up questions ever, we are your sounding board and happy to be here. Yeah. Guess that's that.
I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Well, first, thank you. I mean, I know each of you had to take the time to look through my evidence and then gather your thoughts and then bring them to the committee of four, who had to sympathize a lot of writing, so I can't imagine how much work that is, especially in a condensed amount of time. I mean, you all did that work within a month and then two weeks for the subcommittee, so thank you. And I do want to thank, and I appreciate the fact that Denny and Dawn and Kate's names are reflected in this work, too, because clearly I can't do all of this alone. So thank you to my team for keeping the ship afloat. And I also need to thank all of the superintendents that I work with. Today, I was at a meeting with them, and, you know, I often joke that just like teachers have a cup of popsicle sticks with student names and they'll cold-call people, I cold-call superintendents, and I'm like, I need help today, who haven't I bothered in a while? And so I really appreciate just the network of support of superintendents, you know, not only in my cohort, but within the region, and who are always willing to drop everything, which is always a lot, to, you know, talk or answer a question. I do want to say that I think one of the best parts of this year, and I'm so thankful that we had a school-wide and district-wide goal around student voice, that has been the joy and what has kept me going this year through really difficult times. It's just been great to get to know the kids and them to like stop and have conversations with me now because they feel a little bit more comfortable, so definitely need to keep that up. And yes, thank you for the feedback around, you know, Parent Square and where to move forward with goals, as you know, one year, and it's not even a year because it's only April, we still have 34 days left, but who's counting? You know, certainly things that we will keep in mind and already have kept in mind, and we've already been working with our leadership team to identify kind of where are we going, and once we're able to stop and take a breath at the end of June, work this summer, when we can be clearer about next year, but already thinking about, you know, the instructional practices and the best practices that we're seeing in the district, how do we get teachers to share with each other as opposed to always using outside resources to do that? We talked earlier about a professional growth study that we had done. We had Athena, outside consultants, come in and say, you know, we have department chairs at the high school, we have curriculum leaders at the middle school, we have PLC leaders at the elementary school, we have one Denny. You know, what's working well, what's not, and then what does research say is best practice in terms of providing the support and the direction for education, as well as what are our neighboring comparable districts doing? So now we have all three pieces, and we'll be getting the final report within the next week or so. So it'll be work, but I'm excited to unpack kind of what's going well and where can we improve moving forward. So I'm hopeful that you see, you know, that as a team, we're always looking for continuous improvement as a district, and, you know, personally, I'm always looking to push myself as well. I am, I, you know, my parents and my family will tell you when I have my mindset on something, I don't let it go, so I'm committed to get an exemplary and standard. Because not, we presented at the state level this past summer. Somebody, without permission, submitted a proposal for us to present at the national level.
Amazing. I think Benny will move to exemplary.
And just a simple example that, you know, again, it's thanks to the team, but I was at a job-alike meeting, and one of, you know, it's, we have business things that we have to talk about, but then we do some sharing, professional sharing, sharing around something of interest to us. So everybody said, well, we need to start thinking about the summer retreats. So one of the superintendents in a neighboring district said, I have lots of great templates, and I love how we do our retreats, so I'm going to present how we do it and share some resources and get feedback from people, and then maybe they can take my resources if it'd be helpful to them. So he shared and then opened it up for discussion, so there were some questions and some follow-up, and oh, I do this in my district, and I do this in my district, and I started to talk about what we do in our district, and kind of everybody just put their pencils down and was like, tell us more. And then the other superintendent said, well, thanks for stealing the show. So I was like, I wasn't ready to, but I'm going to get it. I'm aiming for it. Yeah, and, you know, my, again, one of the mottos that, you know, I've learned this summer at a Metco, or this year at a Metco conference is, if you're the smartest person sitting at the table, then you're person sitting at the table, then you're sitting at the wrong table. And I've learned so much from my colleagues and from you and from my superintendent peers that I look forward to learning more and, you know, took a deep dive into policies this year in order to kind of ground myself back in teaching and learning. I'm going to a three-day intensive project-based learning conference in June so that our professional development can be based in project-based learning next year. So we're doing with our teachers what they should be doing with our kids. And I'm sure other things will pop up soon. So thank you for holding me to high expectations, and hopefully I'll continue to produce.
Thank you so much.
It doesn't bite. It's okay.
Not too many buttons. It's four buttons.
All right. Thank you very much for that, Mark. So as we move on, we have, I don't think we had discussion items unless there was something that I was missing. No discussion items. That brings us to the one action item that we do have, which is the approval of superintendent's contract.
Shared this with everyone digitally last week, I think. Just a good preview and let me know if you have any questions. But I think we had the same subcommittee actually negotiating the contract and discussing about, should I share anything else about it? Or do we, I'm not sure if people have seen the details. As I said in the email, I do think it's quite a fair contract, given the school population we have, the fact that we're a regional district, it's comparable with like districts. It's, it is totally fairly, you know, quite straightforward and responsible fiscally. I think that we've seen in the evaluation piece. Beth is just intrinsically driven to make this work. And, you know, with Dawn and Denny's support, we have high efficiencies. So I feel like there's so much savings in that respect. So when we look at costs and savings, we are winning. We, the town residents benefit with their leadership and they support this contract, so.
Yeah, I think if they're, so I think this was sent out. Does anybody have questions?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Then with that, we can, we can move, do we move to a vote for approval by a committee?
Yes. Do you want to mention the amendment to?
Oh, sure. Yes, there's one amendment to the current contract, which expires June 30th, 2025, which is for three personal days, because everyone, every other leader in the district does have that in their contract. Beth has gone two of her three years without that and has simply asked for it. Again, a very small ask, knowing that she puts, you know, 200% into every other day. I think taking three of her personal days also felt fair. So would we vote on both as one? So I'd like to make a motion that we vote once for the amendment to this current contract. It doesn't impact the next contract whatsoever, just asking for three personal days. And that we vote to adopt the second contract all through one vote.
And that's the contract for 2025 to 2028?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Looking for.
Thank you.
Christine Walsh.
Yeah, Christine Walsh.
Should we do it by district?
Do we do it by district?
Okay.
Do we do it by committee, I think?
So then I ask.
Do we do it by committee?
All right.
So you can go with the region.
Okay. Oh, my God. All right.
Here we go, Mark.
Okay, may I have a motion by the region to approve the superintendent's contract for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028, as well as the amendments made to the current contract for three personal days?
Kate Potter, so moved.
Kate Potter. Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
Colleen Burke.
Colleen Burke, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
I just want to say, can we mandate that she takes the three personal days?
I'll be the driver. Where do you want to go? Yes, it's perfect.
She's got the Bronco. She doesn't need a driver.
I have fun music.
Okay, Sherwood.
Yes, may I have a motion to approve the superintendent's contract, July 2025 through June 2028, and additionally approve her current contract with the addition of three personal days?
Becca Hammond, so moved.
Thank you, Becca. Do I have a second?
May I could be all a second?
Thank you, Becca. All in favor, and we're all here. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Christine. And now for Dover, can I have a motion to approve the new contract for Superintendent McCoy for 2025 through 2028, as well as the amendment for three additional personal days?
Kate Cook, so moved.
Thank you, Kate. Second?
Colleen, so first, second.
Second. All in favor?
I did that forever.
All right, it has passed on all three committees. So contract is approved, and we can get any signatures we need after the, after the meeting.
Yep.
Okay. And now we have just one consent agenda approval of the joint school committee meeting minutes from April 1st, 2025. Any questions, comments around the notes there? No? Okay. Then I will pass it to Mark again for a joint.
Maybe he always started me. All right.
I have a regional.
Okay, may I have, what is that?
A motion.
A motion. Thank you. I like the last minute. I have a motion to approve the joint school committee meetings from April 20, April 1st, 2025, from the region.
Angie Johnson, so moved.
Thank you, Angie. And do I have a second?
Kevin, second.
Kevin, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Sherwood?
Okay, can I please have a motion to approve the joint school committee meeting minutes from April 2025?
May I could be all, so moved.
May I have a second?
Becca, you have a second.
Thank you, Becca. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you all so much.
All right, thank you. And now for Dover, may I please have a motion to approve the joint school committee minutes from April 1st, 2025? Thank you, Golley. Dover, second?
Kate Cook, second.
Thank you, Kate. All in favor? All yeses. Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Mark, you're the same one.
All right, everybody, all in favor?
All right, before we part ways, can I just bring everybody's attention to the fact that this is the last time that you'll be sitting together, the 16 of you, because we're going to have some elections and some changeover? And so Jeff, thanks for being the joint chair and bringing everybody together and being the voice of the 16 this year. Jeff and Golley will be stepping down. Hopefully Golley's rerunning, fingers crossed, at the region, saying thank you and goodbye to, and wait for your next volunteer position to Kate and to Mark and Colleen. It will be relocating, unfortunately. And then Sherwood, Christine, and Krista, thank you for your service. So I'll write you each at your own individual meetings, but I just wanted to, you know, while we're together, say thank you. We appreciate you.